L.A. officials hope these new features will help make LAX passengers experience one of the best in the country. From Los Angeles International Airport, I'm Rasha Goel for L.A. this week.
No funds from Los Angeles City's general fund were used for this renovation. And to get the word out on these new LAX improvements is a new campaign to let passengers know what's next. Anita Bennett explains.
As travelers arrive, customer service refs and volunteers are handing out luggage tags with a message about the changes taking off at Los Angeles International Airport.
That's a pretty cool badge. I like it. The fact that you guys are renovating the airport, I think is wonderful. Make it real nice.
The badges are part of a new campaign dubbed "L.A. Next" to let everyone know about the renovations at LAX.
We've spent most of our time actually designing and starting to build. Now we're starting to communicate what it is that we're actually building and changing.
Among those changes, a head-to-toe makeover at the Bradley International Terminal, plus new elevators and escalators across the airport, and some new places to eat. They're even putting up new posters to get the word out. Passengers liked what they heard.
I think it will be great, actually, for the airport to get a facelift, kind of be on par with some of the other better-looking airports in the country.
The $4 billion improvements are well underway and will take about 10 years to complete. Officials admit passengers will face some inconveniences, like they'll have to walk a little bit further to get around all the construction, but they say in the long run it will all pay off in the form of a much nicer airport. At LAX, I'm Anita Bennett for L.A. this week.
The construction project is also bringing big economic benefits to the city. Over time, it's expected to create 40,000 local jobs. High school students from across Los Angeles demonstrated their love of science as they went head-to-head at the annual L.A. Department of Water and Power Science Bowl, which Samuels has the story.
This is one day these students have been working toward for a long time, some for nearly a year. They represent 30 public, private, parochial, and charter schools that have sent teams to the LADWP's 20th Annual Regional Science Bowl competition. They're different in many ways, but united in one thing: a passion for math, science, and technology.
Science is awesome?
The Science Bowl is a game show-style competition. Each match features two teams competing to correctly answer college-level science, math, and technology questions.
W.
W.
W is correct.
LADWP officials were on hand to cheer on the young scientists and perhaps give them a bit of advice for their future careers.
So, we're on the cutting edge. We need highly-technical people like yourself to come and work for us. When it comes time to get a job, come see us.
Over the course of this one day, 150 matches narrowed the field to just two finalists: North Hollywood High School and the Sherman Oaks Center for Enrich Studies. Though Sherman Oaks was off to a great start, North Hollywood won the final competition 146 to 18. At the end of April, they'll be heading to Washington, D.C. to compete against teams from 68 other regions for the national championship. I'm Rich Samuels for L.A. this week.
The all-expense-paid trip to the nation's capital is made possible by the U.S. Department of Energy, which sponsors the National Science Bowl. A unique public space has opened in one corner of Silver Lake, and it's no ordinary park. Yana Kay tells us more about the city's first Streets for the People project.
These pedestrians and community members are enjoying the outdoors in this vibrant new public space. Located on Griffith Park Boulevard between Edge Cliff Drive and Maltman Avenue in Silver Lake, the new space was created as a one-year pilot project where folks can sit and relax, visit local businesses, or engage with their neighbors.
This transformation that we see here today is part of the Streets for People program, which was launched to turn underused streets into vibrant places that enhance our neighborhoods.
Although Sunset Triangle Plaza draws its inspiration from the successful pedestrian plazas in New York and San Francisco, the original concept of a pedestrian plaza in Silver Lake was developed by community members in 2006. The new space features planters, furniture, and umbrellas.
This is one small part of what we hope will be a citywide effort to create these public spaces because we know that public spaces not only create great cities, but also healthy cities.
All-street furniture will be brought inside each evening to maintain the plaza's quality and cleanliness.
I think one park is great. I think 40 more across the city is a game changer. We are starting to change the way L.A. looks and the way we use our city.
The Pilot Plaza will close Griffith Park Boulevard to car traffic for the duration of the project, which will be approximately one year. The twice-weekly farmer's market will continue to operate uninterrupted, and parking spaces will be created along Sunset Boulevard. I'm Yana Kay for L.A. this week.
Streets for People is spearheaded by the Los Angeles County Department of Public Health and the City of Los Angeles Planning Commission, along with partnerships with Departments of Transportation, Planning, and Public Works. An underserved community recently celebrated the opening of a redevelopment project that brings new business and hundreds of jobs to the area. Cindy San Luis reports.
A champagne christening kicked off the opening of Midtown Crossing, a project that began 15 years ago and is now finally complete, located at the intersection of Pico, San Vicente, and Venice Boulevards in mid-city Los Angeles.
I will be honest with you. There were times when I thought this day would never come.
The 330,000-square-foot urban retail center includes a newly-opened Lowe's Home Improvement Center, Starbucks, Panda Express, Wells Fargo Bank, AT&amp;T Wireless Foot Locker, and a Metro Bus Transfer Station, all bringing new jobs to the area.
850 people that maybe didn't have a job a few months ago have a job.
Midtown Crossing sits on 11.5 acres and was created under the Los Angeles Community Redevelopment Agency and constructed by CIM Group.
This is an amazing complex of transit, neighborhood shopping, regional shopping. It's reconnecting this community that had been broken apart for so long.
And providing a myriad of necessities to the 1.3 million residents who live within a five-mile radius while helping to create a bigger sense of community. I'm Cindy San Luis for L.A. this week.
It was a day of recognition as downtown businesses expressed their gratitude to those who make downtown a safe place to work, live, and play. Rasha Goel reports.
The Central City Boosters recently saluted the Los Angeles Police Department and Business Improvement District Safety Officers in the central area for their excellent work.
We have a recognize those folks that on a daily basis go out and do more than and that they really truly need to, to help support and make sure that our community is safe.
Among those being recognized were also local citizens.
Quite often, we forget those civilians, those individuals out there who are working within the community, giving up themselves.
For LAPD Sergeant Jose Covarubias, who received the Supervisor of the Year Award, it was all about his team.
I really like to thank all the officers that worked for me. They've done an exceptional job and pretty much made me look good.
This is a way for the business community to give back, to recognize those that are supporting our community, and this is our way to give back to them.
In Los Angeles, I'm Rasha Goel for L.A. this week.
A former school police officer pays the city back after orchestrating a bizarre hoax, educating the public on diabetes, and remembering Casablanca. These stories and more in City Beat. A former Los Angeles school police officer who staged his own shooting outside of El Camino Real High School in 2011 in Woodland Hills has agreed to reimburse the city $309,000 for expenses related to the hoax. At the time, school police officer Jeff Stenruse said a gunman seen in this police sketch shot him outside the school. His lie caused the school to be on lockdown for several hours. Councilman Dennis Zine had authored the resolution last year pushing for Stenruse to repay the city. The L.A. Convention Center was the site of the recent American Diabetes Association Expo. Experts were on hand to talk about diabetes-related issues such as how to prevent kidney disease.
Drink lots of water, exercise, watch your medication intake, painkillers, salt, sugar, watch all of that.
My dad actually passed away from complications of diabetes. Had a heart attack, and that comes with the disease, I guess, if you don't take care of yourself.
And part of taking care of yourself is exercising. And at the Diabetes Expo, a cardio aerobics class had kids and adults alike hitting the dance floor. The event also offered head-to-toe screenings, healthy cooking demonstrations, and even a rock-climbing wall. Councilmember Tom Labange recently marked the 70th anniversary of the iconic film Casablanca by holding a ceremony at the Humphrey Bogart Star on the Hollywood Walk of Fame.
This was a great movie of my life. I remember my dead girlfriend, and now my present wife, Bridget, how we've often reminisced about life through Casablanca.
Warner Brothers has just released a 70th anniversary Blu-ray DVD edition of Casablanca to commemorate the Academy Award-winning movie. And students from several schools in the San Fernando Valley paid a visit to city council chambers recently to observe how city government operates. The students are all part of a program called Democracy by Design, coordinated by Councilmember Dennis Zine's office. In this week's list of things to do, learning the art and craft of puppet theater, performance art downtown at the Red Cat, and Jewish homegrown history. It's a unique opportunity for your child to express his or her creativity. Maria Bodman is recruiting students for a workshop on Saturday, March 31st, from 2:30 to 4:30 p.m. to design and make shadow characters, and write dialogue and choreograph a shadow play for a live performance on April 7th. The workshop takes place at the Sunland Recreation Center at 8651 Foothill Boulevard in Sunland. The workshop, including materials, is free to all participants through the City of Los Angeles Department of Cultural Affairs, the Sunland Rec Center, and Bali &amp; Beyond. More info can be found at BaliBeyond.com. And on Saturday, March 31st, and Sunday, April 1st, at 8:30 p.m. both nights at the Red Cat Theater downtown, experimental Los Angeles performing artists offer adventurous new works and works in progress in an ongoing series called Studio Spring 2012. There is dance, acrobatics, electroacoustic opera, and much more. Housed in the Walt Disney Concert Hall complex, Red Cat has its own street entrance at 631 West Second Street. For ticket information, go to redcat.org/theater. And the everyday lives of ordinary Jewish families are part of an exhibit at the Skirball Cultural Center called Jewish Homegrown History. The exhibit, going on now through September, includes home movies projected on three giant screens. The vibrant films document the Jewish immigration history and raises issues of identity, such as how Jews forged with other ethnic communities within California. The Skirball Cultural Center is located at 2701 North Sepulveda Boulevard. Go to skirball.org for more info. And remember, you can find this information on our Facebook page. And that's a look at some upcoming things to do. And it's a restoration project that aims to protect murals from being destroyed or falling into dilapidation. Councilmember Jose Wezar recently helped unveil the first of several mural restorations in Estrada Courts on Olympic Boulevard in Boyle Heights. The mural, called Organic Stimulus by muralist Ernesto de la Loza, is part of an effort to restore 13 culturally and historically significant murals collectively called Nature Walk.
As a young boy, I remember running around there, and I would look up at these murals and ask what these figures of Astic were, ask who this guy Pancho Villa was. And you know, later on, I learned in life that I was getting an education because those are things I was learning in the classroom. It wasn't until college that I learned about my history and my culture, and in an academic sort of way. So, I give thanks to those murals for educating me, to ask questions about my history and my culture.
In its heyday in the '70s and '80s, Estrada Courts boasted over 80 murals, but now that number is down to 54. That's going to do it for this edition. Thanks for joining us. I'm Ellen Chang. A reminder that you could catch us online at LACityview.org. You can also follow us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of L.A. this week.
I brought my hopes and dreams for a better life.
Since becoming a U.S. citizen.
I'm running for public office.
I've traveled with the freedom and security of a U.S. passport.
And I voted for President of the United States.
U.S. citizenship means a better life.
I chose opportunity.
I chose freedom.
I chose responsibility.
I chose to become.
A U.S. citizen.
I am proud of America.
G'day, Troy McCavon from North Hollywood. You're watching L.A. City View, Channel 35, our city, our channel.
Good morning. I want to welcome you to the today's Los Angeles City Council meeting. The council meets on Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. All of our meetings are open to the public. You're welcome to come down and speak your mind or watch your city government at work. I do believe we have a quorum. Madam Clerk, so why don't you call the roll?
Alarcon Buscayeno, Cardinals, Inglis Garcia, Wezar Corret, Labange, Parks, Perry Reyes, Rosenthal Zine, Weston Timmer is present, and a quorum, Mr. President.
Okay, first order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Parks moves. Ms. Perry seconds. Next.
Committee to resolutions for approval.
Mr. Labange moves. Mr. Corret seconds.
Mr. President, today is Tuesday. Now would be the time for the flag salute.
Okay, so if we could ask everyone in council to please rise for our flag salute, which will be led by Councilman Zine. Zine?
Ready to begin? A pledge of allegiance to the United States of America, a true republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Members, I want to direct your attention to the agenda. Let's run through the agenda.
Items 1 through 4 are items noticed for public hearing. There's a request to continue item 1 to May 4th.
No, go on, I'm sorry.
And to continue item 2C to April 17th.
Okay, without objection on both of those items. Do we have any cards?
Yes, there's cards on item 2. And also, Mr. President, the Department of Building and Safety reports that items 2A and 2E may be received and filed in as much as the liens have been paid.
Okay, without objection. So, why don't we, with the remaining items, let's prepare the votes, and let's open the roll? Yes, Ms. Perry.
I would like to speak on item 5, please.
Okay, so we haven't gotten to item 5 yet. So, let's, on these items, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, so now we're on the next section, which is 5 through 14, right, Madam Clerk?
Yes.
I know Ms. Perry wants to speak on item 5. Members, any other specials? Cards?
Public hearing has been held on these items, Mr.
Okay, then, on these items, we'll prepare the vote. Mr. Corret. Don't think you're going to get special privileges today because it's your birthday, so I just want to warn you in advance.
Well, thank you.
We're trying to get somebody to sing "Happy Birthday" to you, but I can't find any takers. Maybe I can get the city a turn... No, maybe we could get Steve Buscayeno to do it. Joey B., the new singer. You and Eric can do a duet. Yes, Mr. Corret.
I was just going to ask, at the request of Mr. Wezar, that we hold number 5 at the desk till 11:00 a.m.
Okay, we are holding item 5.
But until 11:00 a.m. when he's able to participate.
Okay. So, on the remaining items, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
All right. Madam Clerk.
Items 15 and 16 are items for which public hearings have not been Items 15 and 16 are items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes required for consideration, and there are cards on both items.
Okay, so without objection, those items are before us. You indicated that there are cards on both items, correct?
Correct.
All right. So I guess that would bring us to the presentation section of today's council meeting?
Yes.
Mr. Zine, you seem to be excited. You have a smile on your face. Rumor has that you have some good news for us, so I'm gonna turn the floor over to you.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President, and I'm joined by our city attorney, our treasurer. They'll speak after I give an introduction. Last year, January 19, 2011, a radio call was broadcast. Officer shot, officer down, officer needs help. Units responded from the Los Angeles Police Department, from the San Fernando Valley, the SWAT Team Metropolitan Division, the California Highway Patrol, the Sheriff's Department, FBI, alcohol, tobacco, firearms. There were over 300 officers that responded to a situation in my district in the West San Fernando Valley adjacent to El Camino High School. A Los Angeles Unified School Police officer in uniform, daylight, in a marked vehicle was shot in the chest, and the units responded to search for the individual that shot this officer. There was a massive search, schools locked down, parents couldn't pick up students, students couldn't go to the restrooms, the whole community was terrorized by the situation where an individual was on the loose in the Woodland Hills area of the City of Los Angeles Third Council District. I responded to the scene along with other individuals, representatives, the command staff from the police department, the fire department. We arrived at the scene, and the search was taking place. Canines, helicopters, and a massive show of force trying to find this individual who had fled into the community of Woodland Hills. During that time, the extensive search did not locate an individual. The search continued, the command post continued into the evening hours. Parents were picking their students up at 8, 9 o'clock at night after that area of the valley was secure. Subsequent, the Los Angeles Police Department investigators found that the situation did not occur, that the officer shot himself. It was a hoax. This police officer for the LA Unified School District Police had crossed that line from being a protector to being an individual who committed a crime. Following that, the next day, when I learned that this was not an actual incident, but this was a staged incident where this individual, for whatever reason, decided to shoot himself and cause this chaos in the community, I decided that it would be appropriate to seek restitution. I then submitted a motion, council supported it, went to the city attorney's office to seek prosecution of restitution along with the district attorney's office that was seeking a criminal filing on this individual police officer who subsequently dismissed from law enforcement. Mr. Jeff Stenruss booked on felony charges, convicted, and ordered to pay restitution. I'm proud today to say that we have that restitution check that the city attorney has brought with him, the actual check for $309,041.76 to the City of Los Angeles. That restitution is brought forward, it will be given to our treasurer to be placed in the general fund, and the message is very simple. If you commit a crime, there's consequences, but if you cost the city resources, in this particular case, from the police department, Department of Transportation, other allied agencies, there's gonna be a cost, a cost in dollars. And when I found out this individual had a home, had some assets, I figured that we should go after that for the benefit of the taxpayers of the City of Los Angeles. So today, we are receiving that check, the $309,041.76, which our city attorney will make the presentation to our treasurer, who will immediately deposit it-
That's right.
...to help keep the city running smooth. So with that, I give you our city attorney, Carmen Turtanich.
You know, the actions of the council were very telling. The response of the City of Los Angeles was heroic. When an officer is shot, what we did was appropriate, but when we found out it was fraud, and through the motions of this council, we were going to file a lawsuit against Stenruss for his assets. We intervened with Paul Nunez, from the deputy district attorney on the case, our office, Ellen Friedman from our office, and Carlos DeLaGara, both. Carlos is not here today, he's at a police commission meeting, but those two were instrumental in meeting with the district attorney's office and making sure that we wouldn't have to go through the expense of filing a civil lawsuit against Mr. Stenruss to get our $309,041.76 back. As part of the disposition in the case, the criminal case, we avoided it through restitution hearing. You'll see, Mr. President, that there's a release in the package that I gave you, and each of the council members should have that release, where we have settled a civil matter against Mr. Stenruss for $309,041.76, and I have a cashier's check in my hand right now that I will present to the Treasury Department as a job well done by Ellen Freeman and Carlos DeLaGara in our office.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney, and we want to thank your staff for fine staff work. Mr.
On behalf of the city treasurer office, I want to thank certainly Councilmember Zine, as well as the city council and city attorney Turtanich for their efforts. We really appreciate this, and we will deposit the money immediately into the city's treasury.
Thank you. Mr. Garcetti?
Thank you very much, and thank you, Mr. Zine. I was glad to second this motion. I was out there with Mr. Zine when this went down. The mayor was out of town at the time, as council president, I was acting mayor. Now, I'll never forget what it was like to see those, the faces of the kids who had to be shuttled out of their own school because of the climate of fear that was caused fraudulently in the end by this one person, and I appreciate you making sure that we stand together, making sure that people here, loud and clear, if you rip off the city, we're coming after you. This was a right bit of restitution, but for that moment, for the time, and the traffic, and everything that else was caused, I'd never seen a lockdown quite as big and as geographically dispersed as that, but appreciate your leadership on the site, Mr. Zine. I was proud to be there with you, glad that we have some resolution, and thank you, Mr. City Attorney, for fighting hard for the people of LA as always.
I asked for the hospital, when I've heard that the officer was down. I went to the hospital and saw the officer in the hospital.
Mr. Buscayeno?
Thank you, Mr. President. I too want to stand and thank Councilmember Zine, the city attorney's office, for the fine work in this issue. I vividly remember working the field when that call came out, officer down, and we mobilized, the city mobilized, and, you know, the last thing we want to hear as a street cop is officer down. And obviously, the developments over the course of the following several days was quite shocking to hear that it was a hoax. And as officers, we do what's best, and this was quite disturbing to the law enforcement community when this came out, and I want to thank again the city attorney and my colleague, Councilmember Zine, for shedding light to this and pretty much getting the money back for all the public safety response. And I want to commend both the police and fire department for doing what was right at the time, and thank you so much for getting our money back.
Not having to file a civil case to do it.
Thank you, and congratulations. Good work.
Thank you.
Good job. Okay, I'm waiting for a signal to let me know if our next presentation is ready. So until I get that signal, why don't I call up Mr. Sean Murphy and Mr. John Walsh for general public comment, followed by Zuma Dog. So I want to try to get you guys in.
Yes, good morning, City Council, President. Happy Good Friday to you and Happy Easter. My choir's getting ready for Easter. Layoffs, the layoffs are coming at the wrong time. I heard recently on the news, layoffs are coming. I don't, I'm not very happy with it.
Mr. Walsh, followed by Zuma Dog.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org the last 15 days since the adulterer posted 126,000 successful server requests. Mr. Garcetti once said about our website that porn sites get 10 times as much as we do. You're the expert on porn sites. Show me one with 1.25 million. Okay, that's 10 times what we had in the last 15 days. I'm here primarily to talk about a man to die, a great man in Hollywood. I haven't heard anything from you. That's Mr. Jack Arian, the owner of the Supply Sergeant. He passed away two weeks ago. I'm asking you to adjourn in his memory. If you're interested in hearing his story, reading his story, obituary of March 16th of this year, go check him out, Jack Arian, dead. Incidentally, we are now calling the Diabetes Foundation, we are calling for a boycott of any contributions. If you want to give to diabetes, give to others. That's because of their sponsoring of the Herb Wesson Roast, and I just want, now if Ms. Perry says, okay, I'll drop it, but any organization that sponsors a roast where a woman is made fun of in a scumbag Trojan joke, and Mr. Englander, who sponsored it, laughs and sneers and said we were making fun of one another, for the record, Ms. Perry was not there. And if you think that scumbag Trojan joke was funny, then donate to the Diabetes Foundation, and we're asking for them to send us a letter, send Ms. Perry a letter of apology. Find out which mayor hopeful is being blackmailed over an adulterous affair, and remember, Ms. Perry, these people who are running against you are following you with private detectives. And if you, you can get up and say no if you like to. HollywoodHighlands.org, you are disgraceful, except for two or three of you.
Thank you, thank you. Mr. Zuma Dog?
Yes, speaking of running for mayor, Zuma Dog, 2013 mayoral candidate, I hope I don't have any detectives following me. And so anyway, yes, and guess what April 4th is? April 4th, 2006 was the first time Zuma Dog came to council chambers to talk about the Venice Beach 4215. So six-year anniversary, and how fitting that Carmen Turtanich is here, 'cause I had some breaking news to discuss with council. You better talk to the city attorney, because I heard that he's using LAPD, LAPD SUVs, detective cars, and city fuel in overtime to run for district attorney. That's right, Carmen Turtanich, who said he wasn't ready for district attorney, now reduced to using city resources, including vehicles, SUVs, the police racking up overtime, and gas fuel charges to run his campaign. Please look into it. Yeah, yeah, now it's time for the Carmen Turtanich roast. Yeah, Carmen Turtanich, everyday person, not a politician. Yeah, yeah, Carmen Turtanich, using city vehicles to run for DA. Oh, yeah, guess I am ready for DA. Yeah, yeah, Carmen Turtanich, yeah, the people's choice. Yeah, not a politician, and now I'm ready for DA. Yeah, yeah, I lied about endorsements. Yeah, yeah, Carmen Turtanich, I got a million YouTube hits. Yeah, oh, yeah, I forgot I paid for them, and my account was suspended. Yeah, yeah, Carmen Turtanich, I lied on my ballot designation, now it's challenging court. Yeah, Carmen Turtanich, off to a good start. I'm gonna be the district attorney that's already been sued in court before I even get elected. Yeah, yeah, Carmen Turtanich, let's see, I'm gonna use some more LAPD, 'cause I gotta run for DA, 'cause I gotta take everything over. Yeah, yeah, I gotta hire outside counsel. Yeah, we're going broke, but let's spend $100,000, and then $200,000 for outside counsel. Yeah, Carmen Turtanich, Carmen the Clown, Carmen the Clown, Turtanich, get this jackass son of a bitch out.
Come on, watch your language. Your time has expired. It's my understanding that we're ready for our next presentation, so if they could please Mr. LaBange?
I just, Mr. City Attorney, I object to the language that the last speaker spoke about, the city attorney of Los Angeles. Would you note that, Mr. City Attorney? Thank you very much.
And we concur, it is disruptive. We concur. So Maria Elena, you brought a few friends?
We brought a few friends.
Just a couple?
We brought a...
Just a few friends?
We brought a few of your friends, a few of your friends.
Welcome.
Good morning, council members. I'm here on behalf of dozens of community, faith, environmental, and labor organizations representing thousands, tens of thousands of residents throughout LA, and we are here to share our vision for Los Angeles' economic future that we call Prosper LA. And our mission as a whole is to address LA's growth in poverty and the vanishing middle class, as well as significant health and environmental challenges. In 1992, we were a city on the edge with extreme racial, social, and economic divisions. We were a city willing to burn itself to the ground, and it forced us to rethink our future and make some real and transformational change. So over the last 20 years, we've tried to nurture the coalitions that would bring about that kind of change. We passed the living wage, you passed the living wage ordinance, you passed the worker retention ordinance, and through that, you made life better for thousands of men and women. We are not the same city as 20 years ago. In housing, as well as other basic expenses, LA rates as one of the least affordable cities in the country. We must chart a course of shared prosperity. In order to have a recovery for all and not just for some, LA needs more good jobs and a paycheck for families to sustain themselves, but at the same time, make our contribution to the services that the city provides. We have to create more jobs, but they've got to be better paying jobs. In some low-wage industries, we have to replace the race to the bottom. Public investment is also important, like Measure R, which will spark growth in other industries. Prosper LA is a unity of eight different coalitions, but each one working to transform one of LA's core industries. Together, we will create 50,000 new good jobs and improve over 150,000 more jobs. At the same time, we will benefit from improvements in air quality, health outcomes, energy efficiency, recycling, and others. A dysfunctional commercial waste system sends many tons of recyclables to landfills, pollutes our communities, and treats sanitation workers like trash. The Don't Waste LA Coalition seeks to replace this with a more efficient system, reducing pollution and creating good jobs by increasing recycling. Next, the Construction Careers Program will make sure that we build our transit system, but we give access to men and women who most need those jobs. Our policy of Destination LA, which will be introduced today by council members Rosendahl, Wezar, Alarcon, and Corretts. This is a policy that will make LA the best tourist destination in the country. Through that, we will grow business opportunities, grow new jobs in construction, hospitality, and the entertainment industries. Good grocery stores will bring healthy food and good supermarket jobs into our food deserts. We should not be given the false choice between good food and good jobs. We demand both in our communities. The Coalition for Clean and Safe Ports is transforming the port trucking industry from sweatshops unweeled into a green, high-road model for goods movements in ports around the world. Repower LA offers a roadmap to a more energy-efficient system, allowing our Department of Water and Power to reduce pollution, lower rates, and create a training path to good, middle-class jobs. At LAX, we're proud of working on security standards for our traveling public, but we want an airport that works for travelers and also for the hard-working employees of LAX. And while we entrust to men and women in our city to take care of our sick and elderly, we have to take care of the home caregivers that provide that to our sick and our elderly. So members of the city council, we have to do more to stop poverty in LA. We have to do more to restore better-paying jobs. We have to do more to restore better-paying jobs. We need smart government policies, but we will back up those smart government policies with a broad coalition of stakeholders that you see here today. We are asking you, we are asking you to support a shared prosperity for men and women across all of Los Angeles, not just the 1%, and not even just the 99%. We want prosperity for 100% of our economy. With that, we thank you. Buenos dias.
Thank you. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you.
God, when you leave, the place will be empty. Thank you again for coming.
Are we to do a chant as we leave?
Chant your way out. Yes. Okay. Their chanting was part of their presentation. We're gonna start our council, continue with our council meeting. Thank you, guys, for the chants, but now we need to go back to work. Okay, Maria Elena, okay. Guys, guys, enough, enough, enough. Now let us get back to work. Thank you, thank you, and good luck to you all. If I could get Michael Carrion, Marianne Fogler in the Valley, and Donna Pierman in the Valley, but Michael, you're up now. Michael.
My question is the same as it was last time. Mr. President, I thought we were gonna start at 10 o'clock.
Michael, I sure wanted it to start at 10 o'clock.
Can we please start at 10 o'clock and tell the public who was late? The public out there has a right to know, but they don't. All that happens is when we're listening at home, we don't know why it's not starting. Mr. Weisart walked in at 10:33. This is the fourth Monday in a row where Mr. Weisart walks in late. Or Tuesday, my bad, thank you. Wednesdays, he walks in late too.
Well, Mr. Weisart was excused. He wasn't supposed to arrive until 11, Michael, so he's early.
He's early? Ah, it's gonna rain. Now, maybe he can answer why the wall is still falling down on Soto Street. Why, he says that I upset his staff. Mr. Weisart's got a rude awakening coming. I've already talked to more than a dozen people who say that his field office in El Sarino doesn't call people back. But yet, I will bring them all in here, one or two at a time, so when they come up to public comment, you, the people here, can see for yourself that Mr. Weisart is full of poop. So, we'll continue. I told Mr. Weisart last time I was here, if he wants to talk, we'll talk. If not, he can sit there and get up to the microphone again and say, "Oh, Mr. Carrion continues to upset my staff." If you do their job, I sat in office with him and told him that they weren't doing their job, and yet, he wants to sit here. We can exchange words till he leaves office. But yet, if he wants to stay in office, he better start doing some work, or the recall will be coming, sir. I will push that issue next.
Okay, Michael. And Michael, wait one second. I would have to say that we have started pretty much on time. Every now and then, it's 10 minutes, 12 minutes. And if you notice, when you're here, I always announce the members of the On Time Caucus, so that people in the audience or that are watching this on television know that's here. As soon as I get here, I begin announcing the members that are here.
That are here.
Yes. So if I don't call the person's name, then...
It's a gray area.
Anyway, I just wanted you to know, my friend.
I just want you to call the people who did the show.
We're gonna go to the Valley for Marianne Fogler and Donna Pierman. Good morning.
A lot of things are going on right now in my life, particularly my dad. He, he's in the hospital. I want you guys to do journey motions today to pray for him, for his speedy recovery. He is very sick, and I appreciate it. He's a World War II veteran, 1941 to 45, and I found out he was in the Merchant Marines, so appreciate if you can pray for him. He's 91. Secondly, you know, it's very unfair to talk about any layoffs. We had layoffs here. A lot of people have already gone. We cut back so much. So we're not going to be, no slices with the CIO. He's got to go. You know, you can work out something, I'm sure, in 2014 with the unions. I'm sure that they'll be glad to not take, I'm sure they're gonna do what they can not to let the city go under, but unfortunately, you have to be bonded yourselves. This is a sad story, but changes have to come to City Hall and stop your spending, so if you know that you're spending wrongfully, then you know it's gonna come out of your pocket, just like what happened to that police officer who wrongfully said that somebody, there was a shooting in Woodin Hills. Mr. Tutanich, Miguel Santana, you guys have got to go. They, this is, allowing the city council, the city and the city controller to continue allowing the politicians to keep on spending and don't be accountable for it by bonding them. Make them accountable for it. It'll come out of your own pockets. All the money that you're taking out of a general fund is coming out of your pockets and concluding the federal money. So, and Bill Rosi, your 3010 thing is costly, because they're just gonna come back for more money, folks.
Ms. Fogler, we will pray for your father's speedy recovery. I know that I do believe that he has power in prayer, so we will pray for him. Okay, the next speaker is Ms. Pierman.
Pierman, yeah. Okay, yeah. I want people to not vote for the parcel tax. That's a big hit for people that's gonna go for the school boards. You know, we already get, they already have been misusing a lot of our money, so I don't believe they know how to use the money correctly, so let's not do the parcel tax and let's leave the money into people's households. And let's make it fair, because it's not fair, because it doesn't go all over the people, it doesn't go for the people in the apartments. The renters, who also should be paying for it, because I'm sure that they have a lot of kids, and it goes to those schools too. Anyway, I'm totally against, what I'm against over there, I'm having trouble with the tap card. The tap card is not a very convenient area, and you want people to use public transit, but the tap card, I had trouble, I finally gonna use, put money on the tap card, and I went everywhere trying to find where I can put money on the tap card. Finally found the orange line, but it wouldn't take my debit card, so I had to buy a smaller amount, so, you know. People are not gonna be using the public transit. I gawked into the orange line, and there's nowhere to prove that you paid for it. So, these cops go every once in a while and they may see you, but otherwise, these people are, I believe, are getting on free rides onto the orange line that you love so much and the red line. Yeah. I have to get the bus pass on the 25th, otherwise I have to go all the way to Wilshire La Brea. I still have, now have to go over to Wilshire La Brea to get my pass, and I'll probably, if I ever wanted to quit a tap card, I'll probably have to go all the way to Wilshire La Brea. It takes about an hour and a half from my workplace to go get one, so let's work on that.
Thank you, thank you. If I could now call Mr. Herman, Mr. Sax, and Mr. Henry Marine.
Fellow members of council, if I may get your attention as the clock begins. The city attorney, Mr. Tutanich, was here, but according to this booklet here, it says, "A district attorney, the city attorney, the Department of Rehabilitation, or the Attorney General can bring an action of enforcement under California state laws that require the privately funded public accommodations be accessible to any individuals or individuals with disabilities, Health Code and Safety, 19958.5." Last week, I was here in discussion regarding the problem of a barrier, and the problem's still there. I know that the city has a hole to crawl out of, but you're talking about federally-funded fundings for people with disabilities and access for us to use the park, to go to work, to purchase in the businesses in the surrounding areas, and more importantly, the hospital, USC, county, on both sides of the street, we cannot use them. The safety, the danger of seniors and women pushing their kids through. Please, think about it. And what about Mr. Salzberg? When are we gonna resolve Mr. Salzberg's issue with the city attorney? When are we gonna put real business to work for the people that are here, for your constituents? The constituents that left, saying they want better wages, they want better health? These are the real subjects we talk about. This is the organization of what we must do to make life better for every Angelino individual in the city of Los Angeles. Furthermore, what Mr. Cameron was saying about Mr. Weisart's office, shame on you, CD14, shame on all of you, Eric, Jennifer, who doesn't return an email. I am not gonna wait longer for you to respond. That's why I'm here today. I have to go to the library. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Herman. Arnold, I don't see Arnold. Arnold, no, Arnold Sax. So if I could get Henry Marine.
Morning.
Good morning.
As you know, since hindsight is squalling, for each hour, we served the people of LA as government employees under MOU 35 and the Hacklaw Agreement, subject to prevailing wage and trust laws. You know, management managed to withhold a steady percent of our money and use it at will. And made others in you believe we were not city or Hackley employees, and that we had no right to recover this money and reinvest it in public employee pension plans. Now Obama's telling us, due to improprieties of administrators and management personnel, money has been diverted from prevailing wage employees. And under the new American Recovery and Reinvestment Act, he is urging our elected leaders to recover this money and get it reinvested into public employee pension plans from which it was diverted from in the first place. And I'm sure Mr. Wesson is gonna be willing to help Mr. Obama, and I'm sure his honorable colleagues would do the same. Now, we're gonna have a celebration, a rollover on Sunday, so let's start the rollover right here before Holy Thursday. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Sax is not here. Matt Dowd, and then we'll go to the Valley for Rick Nightingale, and then we'll come back for Mr. Nora Janian. Matt Dowd.
All right, thank you. Seem Dooch was here. I don't know if you're allowed to say that word under the decorum. There's no list of words that are banned. You gotta have a hit and miss, potluck. I wanna talk to Paul Krikorian, because I think the penny dropped with him on Friday, that he sees there's some depth to me. I'm not just another person here, you know, making outrageous comments. Here's what I did. I drove three federal cases into district court over here, and they all worked and they all went through, and I wanna talk about my cunt. That case is virtually dead, and I don't care about it anymore, but he took $471,000 out of the general fund, that case, and $207,000 went to his attorney, Steve Rhodey. Now, he's charging $700 an hour right now. You guys approved it, $100,000 to the outside counsel. There's 11 plaintiffs on my case. At $700 an hour, it's over $7,000 an hour. Now, they just, they booked us for depositions now, okay? So let's just say for three hours each, at $7,000, it's $20,000 just to sit there and do the depositions. See, so the $309,000 you just got back from his grandstanding, "Oh, aren't I wonderful?" It's all just going straight out the door to the attorneys. So that's what I'm concerned about in this city. The money's just going straight out the door because of Bill Rosendahl. A lot of these guys, they're salt-of-the-earth performers from Venice Beach. They don't care about all this legal stuff, except if you're gonna try and screw them over, they do, but they would, no one wants to be here. We don't wanna go through with this. Check with Bernie Parks. He's the one who approved the checks to the attorneys, and that was Michael Hunt, the vendor. These are all performers, painters, artists, so they're protected. We got the injunction. The case is already lost, so you're gonna end up paying the damages in the end anyway.
Thank you. Rick Nightingale in the Valley.
Yes, good morning, Rick Nightingale. I wanna congratulate Herb Wissen. I think you're doing an excellent job. You're starting on time. It's not your fault those other people aren't there. I think they ought to be fined out of their own pocket, save about $100 bucks and put it into a charity thing, and that'll fix them. You know, the old saying, people understand two things, money and pain. Well, it'd cost them some money. And same as, kind of disappointed with Mitch Engler, you know. I realize that he was, he needed to get out of here Friday, but the meeting got over early. He saw that I wanted to talk to him, and I thought it was disrespectful. So, next time when he's here, I'd appreciate me come over and say hi or whatever. Let's go to turn around, and our CR mayor is back, not at home, and he's in Washington, bragging about that we don't have any gang violence here. I don't know what planet he's on, because we got over 50,000 members in gangs, and I just, I just don't understand that how it got this far out of proportion, but it has. But we don't see when the gang members and they catch them, you don't see, I hate to put it into what nationality they are. They just don't. And let's face, everybody that I turn around and see, and they're bringing them in and so forth, there sure's a lot of Hispanics in there. Most of these 50,000 are around in the San Fernando Valley, because the blacks are in, more in Lancaster, a lot of them, but they're not mentioning who's doing the shooting and beating up people and so forth. The news media just sucks all the way around. It's just unbelievable that they don't give all the facts, only the somewhat highlights that break everything out of proportion. But I'll tell you, something has to be done about these gangs, there's no doubt. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nightingale. Arminak Norojanian and Arnold, you can go right after him. Usually, you know when I call your name and you're not here, but I'm gonna, you're in, I'm gonna have you go behind Arminak. Hello, sir.
Yeah. Good morning, respectable city council members. Good morning, fellow Angelinos.
Uh, good morning fellow Angelinos. Uh, my name is Arminak Norajanian. I'm liberal Democrat and tax and spend liberal. I run for the California State Assembly, 59th District, it is south center of Los Angeles, that is. Actually, I propose to raise taxes 50% against gasoline selling corporations and all manufacturers in order to replenish state coffers, in order to have social programs up and running, in order to increase social spending. Uh, unlike city of Los Angeles, where 49% of, percent of Angelinos voted for a failed proposition, oh, to raise taxes about $2 per one barrel of oil produced in Los Angeles County. Well, actually, uh, I believe the state of California will, uh, react differently to its opportunity to, uh, to actually, to have its lion's share of profits over oil-producing corporations and gasoline-selling corporations like Chevron and, uh, Arco and British Petro. Uh, well, actually, I believe that, uh, state of California, so actually raise taxes 50% and not going with a quarter cent or like it's now, when they just, uh, follow out the cause of raising taxes by offering like a quarter cent increase in, uh, in sales tax, which is ridiculous, actually. And I believe that, uh, I propose also to establish, uh, um, uh, California Satellite Service, uh, uh, Satellite, Cell Phone Service, uh, and, uh, buy, purchase a number of satellites for California, in order for California to have satellite services in remote and forested areas. Also propose to establish, uh, to make a same-sex marriage law of land, and I propose also to ban, uh, uh, to ban so-called medical marijuana dispensaries as they violate, uh, United Control Substance Act.
Thank you, Arminak. Mr. Arnold Sacks. Last speaker on general public comment. Mr. Sacks.
Yes, thank you. Good morning, Arnold Sacks. Couple things from Friday's meeting. First of all, I appreciate Councilman Labange clarifying the potholes on Wilshire Boulevard, mentioning that was the bus lane. And I was thinking, that's the rapid only, the bus only lane, the rapid line that they're supposed to install, it's been talked about for six years. First of all, where's MTA's contribution to this pothole repair for this bus line? And where the hell is the rapid bus? The bus only lane that's been talked about for six years? It's like looking at the sun. You know it's really close, it's only 93 million miles away. Just reach out and touch it. That being said, the story in the newspapers, the mayor's gonna release his budget. So we already know there's a deficit, so I was wondering, A and B. Last year, the, uh, DWP transferred 258 million dollars to the city, thereabouts. This year, 250 million dollars. That's an $8 million drop. How come? Where's the $8 million? Who's speaking up? How about our advocates on the city council asking, "Where's the $8 million?" No big deal. Then, the 1290 funds. In 2010, February 2010, Councilman Herb Wesson argued about taking the AB 1290 funds. Miguel Santana wanted to take all $10 million of it. There was a meeting of the minds, if that's what you want to say, and they only took $800,000 from each council district that had redevelopment agency. This past year, Wendy Grill did an audit, $27 million in AB 1290 funds. Why the difference? How the growth?
Thank you, Arnold.
Where's the money?
Thank you. Thank you, thank you. Mr. Parks, you were on the queue? You're good?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, Madam Clerk, that should bring us to item two, correct?
Correct.
So I have some public comment cards on item two, and if I could have somebody find Mr. Labange for me. I want to call up my friend and former neighbor, Lori Gay, followed by John Walsh, followed by Michael Carrion.
Good morning, Mr. President, members of the city council. I appreciate you allowing me to speak on an issue we deem important to the community. I don't come up out of my hole of community service very often, but I'm here today to protest the potential nuisance abatement lien that's going to be placed against the property at 1533 East 101st Street in Los Angeles. I want to take you back for a quick moment. In 1975, then Supervisor Han came up with a novel idea with the Watts Century Labor Community Action Committee to do a lease-to-purchase program for 25 years for families in Watts. The families paid all their payments and maintenance reserves into a fund that then, with redistricting, was taken over by the city of Los Angeles. At the end of the 25 years, the families asked to be converted to homeownership. Then-city Attorney James Han couldn't find the documentation to make that happen. For two years, there was public outcry. Then-Councilwoman Janice Han asked NHS, Neighborhood Housing Services, to come help clean up the mess. We utilized our own funds, $3.2 million, to convert all the families, 35 of them, in this development into homeownership. Those families were provided 0% deferred loans to fix up the homes that had never been fixed over a 28-year period, and then become homeowners. Now, what's happened is in the last two years, there was some kind of problem with the family that lived in this property. An abstract of judgment was filed by the city attorney for $75,000 as a lien against the property, and now the Department of Building and Safety would like to file a $9,200 lien for a board-up cleanup that couldn't have cost more than $2,000 against the property. We're here to say it needs to stop. I'd like to put a nice family who wants to live in that neighborhood and do well and do right, pay taxes, and be a good voter in that home. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Lori, and it's good to see you. Mr. Walsh.
John Walsh blogging at Hollywood Highlands, H-I-G-H-L-A-N-D-S dot org. 126,000 successful server requests in the past 15 days. Find out why. This concerns hearing, protest, appeals, or objections. We think you're doing an excellent job in, uh, holding the landlord's feet to the fire. I've had very little trouble with my landlord in the, uh, since 1976, when I moved into the unit. Uh, HollywoodHighlands.org, and also go to CityMaven.com now to find out what Maria Elena DeRazo really thinks about the mayor. CityMaven.com right now.
Michael Carrion.
This says the Department of Building and Safety has liens for nuisance and abatement cost. Once again, we have a property on Soto Street that's, uh, been blocking the sidewalks for eight years. It went into, um, it went to court, and it was condemned. Now, my question is, how does a property go get condemned in Mr. Weezer's office and then get pulled out of being condemned and people are living in it? Yet, you go to people like this and take their property while you allow somebody in Mr. Weezer's district to live in a property that's been blocking the sidewalk on a major street for eight years? Shame on you. Where's the Department of Building and Safety? Uh, in somebody's pocket? How can you guys be putting people's property in lien because the weeds are up too high? But a, but a wall is falling down in Mr. Weezer's district, and you allow it to sit there for eight years? Eight years? This should be taken care of by the Department of Building and Safety, and it should not have ever been taken out of being condemned. It should be in the rent escrow. It should be taken from their property owner. Whatever deal Mr. Weezer made with their property owner should be void.
Mr. President, he's not talking about this item.
All right, Mr. Cityer, thank you for your input, Mr. City Attorney. Please continue on this item.
I, what did you say? I didn't hear him.
You spoke offside the item. The city attorney said you're offside the item.
Offside the item.
You will make a general comment on the process.
Okay, nuisance, it's a nuisance abatement. Yet you're not finding this building, you're not doing anything about it. You're ignoring it. So I'm asking, where's the nuisance at? Where's the abatement at? If you're just letting it go, you're ignoring it. It's Mr. Weezer.
Thank you very much. We're going to the Valley. Miriam Folger in the Valley.
I have, I don't have any connections to these particular properties, but they have no, you have no right to put liens on them if it's not justifiable, where you have, like with Krikorian, and so I have to concur that there, as long as he's right on the dot, he's talking on topic, Mr. Labange. And I would hope that you still would do my, I know this is off top, please have a memorial, have a, for the German for my dad. Pray for him. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Saving my time.
Back here at City Hall, Mr. Herman, Mr. Dogg, Mr. Dowd. Mr. Herman.
I was ready to say time. Go ahead. I was ready to say time. I would have been talking, I would have been 20 seconds in already. Fellow citizens of Los Angeles, here's another bad situation when it comes to building and safety under nuisance abatements. A nuisance abatement, is it really justifiable that we allow such a system of government to remove and force people in a situation that is unacceptable? Unacceptable. People deserve to be in their homes. People need the help to stay in their homes so that their children don't have that negative impact of what local government should be doing. I, in particular, am very well of what a nuisance is and the abatement of it. Unfortunately, it affects all of us, not just here, but the people that left, that strong support of people who are looking for a better, healthy life, working in Los Angeles, providing tax-paying dollars so that you and you can put it to use. So rent escrow, condemning homes, what's going on, city of Los Angeles? Taxpayers, are you listening? Take note to what's happening in your community. Take note to what's happening within your local government. Stand up for the people who don't understand, who can't speak on behalf of what's going on because of the level, the impact of stress that's affecting their lives, and they just want to run into a closet and slam the door and wish that it never happened? These are not things we're making up here today. A nuisance is a nuisance, but for anyone to be removed from their home, put in a disadvantage because they can't work, because they can't find a job in the city of Los Angeles that they do not qualify, shame on you.
Mr. Dogg.
And look at this, what wouldn't seem like an innocuous item only Zuma Dogg spoke about is now a citywide day-in-and-day-out hearing with a long line of public comment speakers, and I thank you. Now, it says here hearings to protest, appeal, or object, and I'd like to do all three on behalf of the people that may not be here today, because this needs to be put on the record on their behalf, because there's an FBI investigation into the Building and Safety Department. And I talk about it a lot, and I want the people at home to know that if you're a municipality and if you are a mafia, a Rico racketeering orchestrated crime ring, and you gotta get your meat hooks in something, this is it, the Housing Department and the Building and Safety. And I am protesting against this, Dion, because the people may have been erroneously placed into lien for these items. I'm speaking on behalf of these people. I'm here to say due to the, okay, I'm gonna say it like Carver Tatum was saying, due to the fact of an FBI investigation into Building and Safety, it's possible that these are erroneous liens, and once the erroneous liens are tacked on, then this passed down the line, and then they lose the property, like you heard the lady that hurt.
Mr. President, he's still not talking about these liens.
I'm talking about, okay, 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 let me explain. Building and Safety inspectors are being investigated for taking bribes. Your outreach contractors are being investigated for conflict of interest. Roberto Adolpe and Bud Overham told me two weeks ago, the FBI's still investigating. So I'm here to say, don't vote yes on this, because the FBI's investigating for bribes. So it's possible these people were put into this program because they didn't bribe the right person. You understand? It's, it's a very simple thing. I'm very much on topic. I want a no vote from council, because the FBI is investigating Building and Safety, because unless you bribe them, and then unless you bribe the outreach contractors, then you're not gonna get the sign off, and you're gonna end up here, and you are voting yes on it.
Matt Dowd.
Thank you, yes, Tom, of course, looking good up there too today, and look fit and healthy, running across the front here before, I like that, healthy and running and running the meeting well, I gotta say. So, yeah, Building and Safety liens. Let me explain to the public what, what happens here. See, what they do is the, the Building and Safety inspectors, they go around and they, they, in fact, first of all, this, the, the people in the pockets with the city, the developers, they identify lots that they need, that they want for their development, and then they, especially these ones that are disrepair, they go in and they, they charge you a fortune. You just seen the, the evidence from the woman who said there was a $2,000 job, but you're charging 9, $9,200. So what they do is they, they put on these liens right here, and then the people can't pay for the lien, and so they end up having to sell their property, and the city buys it cheap, and that's how they get it cheap. It's a racket.
Okay, that completes public comment on this. Note, we get a card late after public comment was called for. Mr. Nightingale, we must get it before, please note that. Madam Clerk, Representative for Building and Safety, real quick, right up here, right now, give for the public's benefit these issues and the statement for Building and Safety. Thank you so much. This is a procedure that the city does, et cetera.
Okay, um, I work with the Department of Building and Safety. I'm a senior inspector. I've worked with the abandoned building task force. Uh, I've worked with the problem property resolution team with the city attorney's office on these particular vacant abandoned properties. Uh, the procedure with this Department of Building and Safety is that we go out and respond to complaints and go out to observe these properties and see what types of conditions they're in. Most of the time when we go out to these properties, they're vacant, they're abandoned, they're being used for illegal activities such as gang houses, narcotics sales, prostitution. Vacant properties attract homeless people, which start fires. They're left completely negligent with trash debris, um, just a multitude of things that cause the community to fall apart.
And you work, you work to reach the property owners and get compliance. If they don't get compliance, this is the final legal step.
Right, so we go and do title reports. We notify the owners of the property of the problems that are going on. Most of the time, the property owners are, um, almost unobtainable to get, uh, in response to our orders, and they don't take care of them, so the city is forced to take care of the problems and fence barricade and clean these properties. Uh, this all costs the city taxpayers money, so, uh, we have a process where we bring these, uh, costs to the city council and then ask for the liens to be placed against the property.
And there's a hearing at the Building and Safety Commission on this before?
Yes, before it comes to council. That was for the public's benefit. Thank you and the inspectors for their work. There's no speakers on the queue. Madam Clerk, on these items, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate to vote. Next item.
14 ayes.
Next item.
Item five, called by Councilwoman Perry.
Councilwoman Jan Perry.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. In April 2011, I introduced a motion asking for a report on the implementation cost and pace of a 75-megawatt feed-in tariff program, or pilot program, rather, or FIT, some of you may know it that way. Now, the program is underway. It is very promising to see the department commit to the long-term contracts of renewable energy and interconnection agreements that will help them reach their long-term goal of 150 megawatts and continue with a successful in-basin solar feed-in tariff program. This program is not only good for the environment, it is an incentive for owners of solar infrastructure, generating less than 3 megawatts, to sell their excess energy back to the Los Angeles Department of Water and Power. Now, the future pro, future growth of this program will help us achieve a robust renewable portfolio standard while complying with SB 32. I hope that we will adopt this ordinance addition today and concur with the DWP board actions taken in December 2011.
Okay, we have public comment on this item. Oh, so we're not required? Okay. Mr. Weezer.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Colleagues, we heard this item at the last Energy and Environment Committee, and I thought it was worthwhile to ask the Department of Water and Power to come up and explain exactly what this is. It's a very important component of our renewable energy plan, and it's also asking us to be in compliance with some state legislation, particularly SB32. And so it was, I think it's important that as we move toward this path, that we are familiar with this, because this is not only an action for today, but it is going to require some updates from the Department of Water and Power to the committee and the council as to where they are with this program, and also in the future coming back for additional components of this program. So this is the initial part of this program, but it's a very important part of our renewable program. So if you could, we have Ron Nichols, our general manager, and the gentleman who could also introduce himself. And if you could briefly explain what a feed-in tariff is and how it factors into our renewables program and what this actually means. Thank you.
Okay. My name is Michael Eppster. I am Assistant Director of our Power System Planning and Projects for the Los Angeles Department of Water and Power. And feed-in tariff, briefly, is an opportunity for the citizens of Los Angeles to install solar on their rooftops and properties. But what they do is then they connect it to the Los Angeles grid, and DWP buys that power and then redistributes that solar power to all of the customers in the city. And it does contribute to our renewables portfolio standard. We do need to achieve 20% on average between 2011 and 2013, and then steps up to 33% by 2020. Also, SB32 requires DWP to offer a feed-in tariff program. And so this demonstration program is an opportunity for DWP to test the process and also to test the price. So with that price and process discovery, we can then have dialogue whether we should offer a 75-megawatt or 150-megawatt program going further to fully comply with SB32.
And, Mr. Counsel, just as a clarification of what's before you today, is a request for a delegation of authority to sign individual agreements and interconnection arrangements with those homeowners and building owners and developers that are placing these solar panels on residential and building roofs for interconnection to the department. We will have ultimately, as we move forward, we're going to be looking at hundreds of these as we go forward on these. And it's basically a ministerial action on your behalf to allow us to move forward and be swift and responsive to make certain that we're timely in getting solar ready to move in response to this feed-in tariff as quickly as our customers respond to it.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And colleagues in committee, we instructed the Department of Water and Power to report back quarterly on the status of this program. Our intention is to make sure that this program is transparent, provides reliable power, and consists of competitive agreements. So we will be hearing back quarterly from the Department of Water and Power in committee. Thank you very much.
Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and thank you for some movement on this. And I want to thank also city attorneys who drafted the work on this and the good work moving forward. I think, you know, when we introduced a motion back in August urging DWP to move forward with the feed-in tariff, we know, and we've actually just had a lot of workers that were here today this morning, who were speaking about the importance of good jobs here in Los Angeles. And this is one of the eight planks that they had in looking at energy efficiency, but also down the line, looking at our solar installation. A strong clear and certain solar program, we know will help make Los Angeles a leader in emerging energy industries. I was recently at the White House, and I met with folks who are looking particularly about solar installation jobs, which I know there's a lot of people who are obsessed with our solar manufacturing, which quite frankly, the United States won't compete in. But 80% of the jobs, good news is, come from the installation, not from the manufacturing of solar power. So, you know, to me, the path forward is one that has many branches. The full spectrum of energy production to save families and taxpayer money, cleaning our air and water, helping lead our nation forward towards greater energy security. And I want to thank also the folks at UCLA, USC, Los Angeles Business Council. It's great that we're, you know, looking five to 10, and a willingness to go up to 150. And I know a lot of that depends on where we are with our rates, with our conservation. And we'll look at that with a very sober eye and recognize that connection and appreciate you making that connection. I think that the people of LA have voted time and time again with the options on their bills to go green. But we have to make sure now that we have the ratepayer advocate and others in place, that we can give them the confidence that going green also is in the best and most efficient way possible. So I think this is going to be a good thing for our jobs around here. It's going to be good for our building owners, as well as long-term for our DWP and cleaning up our air. So glad to see this finally moving forward. And I urge DWP to do whatever that we can to be pushing towards the more ambitious goals of the 150 megawatts that we know can be producing jobs here in the basin. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Mr. Corretts.
Thank you, Mr. President. I certainly agree with all the positive things that Mr. Garcetti just said, but I do have a couple of questions. One of them relates to a call that I got from a constituent after we had our hearing in ENE about his own experience in installing solar panels. He and his wife decided to trade in their backyard, basically, for a solar installation. And so he began the process in November, and I guess that was completed in February. And now he's told that it will take DWP about three months to actually turn it on. So my question is, is that accurate? And breaking it down, first of all, how long does it take to get a rebate number so a customer could be assured of getting his rebate monies before he buys the solar panels?
So let's just clarify, there's really two programs. There's a solar incentive program, which is what's in existence today. And customers apply, and they get a rebate, and we inspect them and turn that program on. The feed-in tariff is a little bit different. It's not a program we have today. It's a program that we will be launching. So the process is that, under the demonstration, customers will put a price in. And we will then shortlist those customers and let them know that they're in that process. And we expect that to take four weeks. So a customer who puts a proposal in will know within four weeks whether they're in the process or not. Then our inspection time, so they'll have an opportunity to build that solar. It may take them two months, three months, it may take them 12 to 18 months, quite frankly, depending on the size of the system. And we have scheduled a two-week inspection time. So once they are turned on, we will be out within two weeks to validate, turn the system on, and then start paying for the energy that they deliver to the citizens of Los Angeles.
So they're understanding with the current system that it'll take them three months to get a permit and actually be able to turn it on? Is that currently the case?
That is not currently the case. Is that currently, it is about a two-week processing time. There are times where it goes to three or four weeks, and we bring that down under two weeks as far as the inspection period. So that's the processing time for a customer. Once they fulfill all their requirements, for us to come out, do the inspection, and turn their systems on.
So I don't know why their expectation is that it would take three months and where they heard it from, but that shouldn't be the case.
That should not be the case.
Okay. And how do we make this program more cost-effective for ratepayers?
Well, one of the ways that we're trying to make it as cost-effective as possible is by doing this price discovery, is by having the opportunity for the market to compete and establish the prices. We're going to get the best prices for the citizens of Los Angeles, and that will help reduce the price we pay for the solar. We're also really going to look during this demonstration phase on process discovery so that we can wring out inefficiencies in the process. Since we've not done this program, we don't know. But as we do this 10-megawatts, we will start to look at those inefficiencies and figure out how we can wring that out, get our administrative costs as low as possible when we launch a full-blown program.
And how do we establish the price point?
The demonstration program is contemplated to establish that through a competitive process. So there's a carve-out for smaller systems and a carve-out for larger systems, so they don't have to compete against each other. But a customer will determine that I can put this much solar in, it's going to cost me this much, that's the bit I will put in. And then we're going to select the least costly projects for the citizens. And it's all-in costs, it's the cost of the project and the interconnection costs and everything for when we make those final decisions.
Thank you, Mr. Corretts.
Thank you.
Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I want to thank Ms. Perry and her historic leadership on this issue of focusing on it that brings us in part here today. Fee and tariff, okay, it's been going around for a while. A lot of people have been talking about it. How many people are in the queue now to participate in this? And what's your sense when, and I'm not, you know, intelligent enough to know, is that it says here that there's a certain megawatts owner and operators renewable energy generating systems up to three MW in size may sell their energy directly to, explain who would fit in that category and how long of a list and how, I want to be incenting the people out there because we are sunny Southern California. Is this the moment to get into it?
Councilmember Rosendahl, there isn't a list as of yet because we're, this action here today is an important prerequisite to us going forward, actually kicking off the program.
Right.
Our intention is that we will, we're going to have some workshops here over the balance of April after the determination here, and then starting up that program in May. So that's, at that point, when we go out and literally going to open up the opportunity for submitting applications, that's when a list would come. We do anticipate that it will be very popular. And the only reason we're limiting it to the 10 megawatts is so, as Mr. Webster explained, so we can get some good information on this before we scale it up and make sure we do it right, so we don't encounter some of the difficulties that we've incurred in the past with our solar center program, similar to those that I believe Councilmember Corretts was referring to.
Right. And what I'd like to do is propose that once we approve this, at least in my district, I know Mar Vista's been a leader, frankly, in a lot of this environmental issues, that I would host a meeting in my district. We'll bring the cameras in, we'll bring the people in. So everybody who's got the privilege of having a roof can get a chance to go solar. And I'd like to have that opportunity. Will we make it simple and easy, and people can read it and understand it, and then have a community meeting on this?
Would be pleased to do that. That's exactly our intent in those meetings, and we'd be happy to schedule one in your district.
Good. I'd like to do that and give people, so they can ask you questions and try to understand it, so we can all buy into this or not buy into it. Thank you. I think it's a great idea, obviously. I think it's a no-brainer, and it's exactly the direction we should be going. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. Where's Mr. Labange? Well, let's move to Mr. Alacon.
I want to make it very clear. I intend to vote for this item and give the department the opportunity to do a pilot project to find out the best ways we can implement a feed-in tariff program at the city. I've been a longstanding supporter as a state senator on the Energy Committee, as well as a city council member, believing that unless we create the incentives for people to participate in capturing solar power, then we will never create the economies of scale to make it marketable in our economy. And so I do think it's time that we do a demonstration project. Can you first tell us how much 150 watts, megawatts is in the entire system? What percentage is it?
150 megawatts is about...
Can we have the Jeopardy music, please?
Yeah. Door number three. Sorry, I was trying to do the math in my head, Councilmember. It's about...
It's going to be about 3% of our entire system. Our peak load is about 6,500 megawatts.
Okay, so it's a very small portion of the total, and that's the maximum.
But, Councilmember, it's important. It's very important. That 3% becomes about 10% of our...
But that's not my question. It's a very small part, so it's not going to disrupt the system. And the reason I ask that question is because the one thing that caught my attention here is that, and what is the average price of solar these days?
Well, for very, very large systems, the average price for solar is running around $95 to $98 per megawatt hour, 9.5 cents to 9.9 cents.
9.5 cents. But you are asking for authority to purchase solar at up to 30 cents?
And the difference is, is that some of the projects that we're seeing these very low prices are 150, 200, 300-megawatt projects. But as you look at the commercial businesses and the homes and the properties in Los Angeles, multifamily units, those projects are going to be very, very small. And the cost to put a small project on is going to be much, much higher.
No, I recognize that. But again, I intend to vote for this because we do have to do a demonstration. But I think it's very important for the public and my colleagues to understand that the additional cost for this energy is borne by all the other ratepayers. And at 150 megawatts, you know, it's probably not going to be very noticeable. But if we're talking about a much bigger project, and we're purchasing solar at 30 cents when the average cost of solar is nine and a half cents, and natural gas is lower than that, although it may go up, or definitely will go up, and the other forms are less, you know, I think we really owe it to full disclosure to explain to people why we want to authorize 30 cents, you know, per 100, what is it? What's the...
Per kilowatt hour.
Kilowatt hour.
Right. And we certainly hope that we don't even come close to those prices when we do this price discovery. We'll find prices much, much lower. And when we come back to report to you, we'll be able to report the prices for the smaller systems, the prices for the larger systems. We don't anticipate getting anywhere close to that level.
And as a clarifying point on that, we will, after we've done this 10-megawatt program, this demonstration program, when we get some better ideas of what are the prices here in LA installed on our customers' roofs, we will come back with a report that lays out what we found, how it looks going forward, and what we think the costs are going forward.
Last question.
Yeah, just to make a point, colleagues, in this term-limited world, I'm not going to be here. Those of you who will be here when this comes back, I really think you need to focus on that pricing issue to make sure that we don't purchase energy far beyond what the ratepayers would consider to be normal, since they are going to be bearing the burden for that additional cost. Thank you. But I do support this pilot project.
Mr. Labange.
Thank you very much, Mr. Nichols. In this issue here, something that I'm passionate about, I think all our members are, is we're, the charges to our park system and to our school system and to our public buildings, which is necessary. And I want to see a program that takes off on creating solar energy opportunities at every gymnasium, every, talking to John Muckry, every schoolhouse where it's possible, or other public facilities. What is that future? What do you have that? I know that's not strictly the topic, but do we, are we looking at those options?
Councilmember, we are looking at those options. We do have what we refer to as both a utility-built solar program, and we're updating our evaluation of that right now. And we have been working with the city in evaluating best priorities for putting the solar center program.
Because they could sell it back to you, and I'd rather, if, let's say, a gymnasium at Los Angeles City College, Community College, public institution, that's a very large rooftop could provide more than the house across the street on Heliotrope in the Hollywood area. If this is, at this stage, in a scale of 1 to 10, and 10 being you're paying the tariff, where are you on that scale right now, on this process? This vote today is important? I'm going to support it?
I would say on that process, we're about a 3 because we're planning, we're evaluating. We have done some installations.
I got it. Okay, we're good. Where are we with schools, parks, art centers, and all the other stuff that we're going to have to really challenge the budget in? Because they have to pay your bill now. Where are we, where are we on the school development? Like at a 1?
Well, we're presently evaluating, we're working with LAUSD across the board on both an energy efficiency plan as well as a solar plan. But we're, yeah, we're less than a 3.
We're less than a 3. Okay, I just want to pledge my support to DWP and really try to push this here. Because that's money that the parks won't have to pay if they could sell it back to you, that the schools, and that means more money in the classrooms, a simple one. I only wish we started out this way. Because often it comes, all the greens come in and they call out loud for this type of program, which is good. they, they call out loud for this type of program, which is good, but I think we should have started out with the public buildings. That being said, let, it's public schools. Let's vote for this today. But, Mr. Nichols, with the TVF, something you want to add to this?
What I wanted to mention is that what we can do is really focus some of our outreach on the schools, the government buildings, so that they feel, they know how to participate in this feed-in tariff program.
Got it.
Because if, if it's easy for them to participate, they will be able to reap benefits from putting solar on their system. So we will make that a, a special goal that we will outreach to the schools and government buildings so they understand the program.
Just, could they tie into this program too?
They absolutely can tie into this program.
So just a friendly amendment, if I could get a second on, that DWP be encouraged to, as they always do, reach out to the Community College District, to Los Angeles Unified School District, to all public buildings, city and county within its service area for the benefit of this program. Is there a second to that or accepted public, how to, that's a friendly amendment. Any objection?
Mr. Weezer? Is it friendly?
Not a report back, just make that part of the process. Help the schools. Could you do that? Is that okay?
We're fine with it.
Yeah. It's all, they're on a 3. They got to get to 10. They don't need a report back. We just got to do it.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Labange. Mr. Zine.
Thank you.
Wait, what?
Mr. Alarcon, take it away.
Wait. Point of clarification?
Mr. Cardness raises the question about whether we can amend an action by the commission because that's what we're approving here.
We can't amend the commission.
Yeah, so the, the best way to do this, Mr. Labange, would request, make a request that they report back on this concern.
A motion, and I'm going to get 70 to second it, and, but you already going to do it too, but that's good. Thank you, Mr. Cardness.
Okay. Mr. Zine.
Thank you. Mr. Ron Nichols. I'm concerned about the consumers and how it's going to impact them. One of my Woodland Hills residents contacted me, put solar on, building safety inspected, water and power inspected. The inspectors couldn't agree. It was done by a legitimate contractor, but the inspectors had different opinions as to if it met the standard of building safety and the standard of Department of Water and Power. Because I guess there's two inspections that are conducted, one from building safety, one from water and power. We need to somehow coordinate that so we don't have one department saying yes and the other department saying no. This particular constituent had to go through a lot of hassle, went through a legitimate contractor to have it done, and they couldn't get the inspection, inspectors to agree. So that's an issue that somehow you need to work with building safety. So maybe they can go out there together or combine resources instead of sending two inspectors out somehow. I mean, if it fits one, it should fit the other.
They do, Councilmember, they do actually review for different purposes. Building inspection is, building safety is looking to make certain that it's, meets their codes and there's weight-bearing issues. We're looking at it from a safety perspective of meeting our interconnection requirements and switching requirements and meter requirements. It would be unusual to me to find that there would be an inconsistency between that. If that is still a lingering issue with regard to that particular customer...
No, they, they finally resolved it, but the fact is, it, it should have been a smooth process where the inspectors agreed. If you're dealing with some fly-by-night, I can understand, but this was, according to this constituent, who's an executive with a major movie company, wouldn't, wouldn't be trying to cut dollars on it. It, it just seemed that the city representatives, the inspectors couldn't get on the same page. So just, if you can discuss with building safety, make sure that's not a continuing saga. And the other, my neighbor just told me yesterday, he's getting a system put on his home. It's going to cost him $70 a month and $10, and all, I guess all the rebates go back to the company. My concern is with all these solar companies that are now popping up because it's obviously becoming something where the consumers are going to save money, is if, if there's some way we can show which ones are legit and which ones are not fly-by-night, because I can see what happens is people are taken advantage of and then lo and behold, they're sold to bill of goods, the company gets the rebate, they take off, this person is then with a system that's not going to work. I don't know if you've had a screening or if we can, like Underwriters Laboratory that, on electrical equipment, just, you know, you go to a restaurant, it's got a rating by the county health department. We need to somehow let the consumers know that these companies meet a certain standard versus, because I'm, I'm sure it's going to happen, if somebody's going to just put some systems in, get the money and then take off, and then the consumer's stuck. So how do we assure them, and this particular company, I thought was unusual, that the company's going to get all the rebates, the consumer's going to pay $70 a month, and that's a 20-year term that they're paying, and then I get, they said $20, $7 a month and $10 a month to water and power, and the other, the company takes it all. If, if that's a legitimate water and power or legitimate solar process, we need to make sure that we have businesses that are doing the right and they're not scamming people.
That's right. Let me speak, you have two issues there. Let me speak to one. Obviously, these all, if there's current activities, this is all under...
As of yesterday.
It's under our solar incentive program.
Right.
The feed-in tariff hasn't started yet, but the, this would be a situation where there are, obviously, they're doing a lease of, of the equipment. So someone's providing it, they're putting it on, they're into a lease agreement. They work out between themselves as to who gets the credit. Typically, the leasing company gets the incentive and the rebate and then, and then works back with the owner of that, that home or, or, or commercial building.
This is a residential.
Yeah, for the resident. Then that, that leasing party who is, is providing the lease for that typically then says, here's what you'll pay me per month for that. And that payment is typically reflecting what they receive, both in the way of tax credits from the federal government and a rebate from the department.
So my concern is the company does installation, they get the rebates.
Right.
They take off, the consumer's then stuck.
Right. Well, the other that, I think, have Mike speak to the issue of what we're doing in our contract going forward on our feed-in tariff with respect to minimum requirements for those parties.
See, I, I just want to make sure, and I don't have, you don't have to, a long debate on it. I just want to make sure that the consumers have some protection. These are city residents. They should have some protection provided by the city that the companies that are installing have some, some stamp of approval that it's not a fly-by-night. Otherwise, the consumers are going to get ripped off. They're going to start screaming to us, we'll come to you, you'll say, well, we should have done something. I want to do it before we get to that point.
Last question.
No, that's not a question. That's a statement. So if you folks can just take that and do something with it.
We, we are working on that and we actually have some specific provisions in our contract that certainly go towards that. It's not an ironclad guarantee, the department's guaranteeing performance, obviously, on behalf of those parties.
But they meet a standard.
But they meet a standard and requirement to get in through the door.
Mr. Cardness.
Thank you very much. I just want to clarify, this feed-in tariff that we're talking about today, is this something that the department wants to do and/or it's something that state and federal legislation is basically moving us in that direction, whether we like it or not?
Well, in this, in this situation, Councilmember, it's both. SB 32 requires that we offer a program on it. It doesn't require the specific timing of that, and it gives guidance with respect to the ultimate amount. We have moved forward, we've embraced it. We believe it's, we believe that solar is an important future for our customers and we want to get it done right and we want to advance this forward for all the reasons that have been discussed here today. So it's, it's, it's a bit of both. And we are behind it. We're, we're very supportive of moving forward in, in the fashion that we're doing.
So state legislation requires it, but the state legislation doesn't require that we like to do it, correct?
Well, that would be true, yes.
Okay. Are you, as the head of this department, are you saying that the department would like to do this?
Yes. We, we believe this is, this is an important tool as part of developing solar overall in Los Angeles. We think it's an important tool as part of our entire renewable resource portfolio and it's something that gives our customers some options that they can take some action on behalf of themselves as, as part of it and not just be the utility taking action.
Now, let, let me clarify something because when the department was talking about six megawatts and now 10 megawatts or what have you to go out there first, the department was being criticized that that was nothing, it was just not enough, it's a joke or what have you. However, on the first 10 megawatts of contracts, those contracts are going to be able to be amended in a year or two if we find out that we, the price point, we were off? Or are they going to be the kinds of contracts that the department and each one of these, these organizations are in agreement for how many years?
These, excuse me. These will be 20-year agreements. There won't be anything that changes those contracts and the...
So, so wait a minute. So when we went out with 1 megawatt or 10 megawatts or 75 megawatts in this step, the bottom line is we would be talking about 20-year agreements?
We are talking about a 20-year agreement for the individual contracts that comprise up to 10 megawatts. And the reason that we set that level at 10 megawatts is cumulatively, within the cost range that we anticipate in the market, it is a de minimis effect on total rates and yet it's incredibly important for us to get the information that we need to learn about it that then allows us to go forward with a larger scale.
Have people done a feed-in tariff where the price point that they hit was not beneficial to the, to the, to the utility? Did anything happen in any other country, anywhere in this country?
We have certainly, we have certainly seen in other countries where, where the price levels that came within, without, when they set out a program and they didn't set a cap on the, on the volume that they would do, that they ended up getting overall costs that are, that were, that were detrimental.
But they were forced to pass that on and blend it on to every user, not just the solar contracted...
That's correct.
Individual, right? And which, which goes to what Councilmember Alarcon was talking about. And what we're talking about here is, in the first step, trying to figure out that price point. And then perhaps sometime at the latter part of this summer in 2012, you're going to be able to come back and say that you're confident and comfortable that we know what the price point is for the next 65 megawatts, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
Or potentially beyond, depending upon the price points that we see and the input that we get.
But, but more importantly, so the department is not doing a miniscule, a miniscule effort here. The department is in fact talking about 75 megawatts that we're going to be able to contract with small and large producers of that and they can feed that back into the system so that we can have a, as negligible as possible effect on all the ratepayers within the city, which is what Councilmember Alarcon was talking about, right?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Kocorian.
Pass.
Mr. Weezer? You pass also?
Yeah, I pass it.
Okay.
I actually did. Mr. Cardness answered the questions I was asking, which is, Mr. Alarcon asked us to raise that question in committee, which was come back to us, report on the price point to go on to the further after this demonstration project.
And we've agreed to do that, yes.
Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you. I just want to say to Mr. Zine, whoever he is, I know he was around here, the solar zoning ordinance that we wrote, Mr. Reyes and I, earlier in the year, as a working group that's actually addressing a lot of those concerns that are being talked, installation regulations, permitting, all of that, a common problem we face when we talk to folks out there, between not just building safety, I mean, building safety, DWP, we've had companies, Mr. Rosendorf, there's one in his district that was ready to go with solar for, forever and just couldn't get the plug in, then had got to move, building safety set here, then there. So that working group, I invite anybody from the council and the council offices to join. It's a very effective place to problem solve that stuff.
Thank you. Mr. Coretts.
Yeah, I have one question, additional question. Are we anticipating any unanticipated impacts on infrastructure by implementing this program? And part of why I'm, I'm thinking of it today is because we had that kind of thing happen on the water side with the, now I understand, six water main breaks in the Fairfax area in my district. So I'm wondering whether this has any similar kind of impact, and I don't know if you could speak for a second about what, what was going on with the water main breaks as well?
Well, I, I could, if it's appropriate, I could speak to what I know about the water breaks, but I don't know if that's...
A, a brief comment, but it's really not part of the agenda.
Hey, well, ever so briefly, there were, there were, we had taken one of our reservoirs out of, out of service for some inspection. In order to do, do that, we had to change the operating configuration of that portion of the city. And it appears that during the course of that, it appears that may have resulted in some overpressurization of that and, and that's the consequence that appears to be subject to further inspection on that. As for your question on the issue of, do we, are there any unanticipated, by definition, we don't anticipate them, we are, we have done evaluations of our system in general at a broad level with respect to its ability to accept solar because systems are designed not for, our system isn't designed for power coming from our customers, it's designed for power flowing to our customers. We've evaluated that and in part, we've had some learning experience through the solar incentive program levels and we will get more understanding because some of these will be a bit larger through the feed-in tariff. That's one part of the evaluation that we'll do. We'll look at each, each project that comes in and evaluate the expected performance of that within the local area of our, of our distribution system to determine that, make certain that we don't anticipate having a problem.
And on the water main issue, are we able, now that we've seen what happens when we take a reservoir offline, are we able to do it differently in the future to make sure that we don't have this kind of explosion, explosion of water mains again?
We, we're, we are evaluating that, that situation. We'll have more information on that later because clearly to try to learn from what that situation happened.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Englander.
Yeah, I just want to say...
To close, I believe.
To close, yes, to close. I'll be very quick. And it's just a comment that I want to say, we're not being proactive here. We're being reactive. This should have been done a long time ago. I applaud your efforts on this. I fully support this initiative. I think it's something that's well overdue, quite frankly. I think we need to get more people on solar. We've got to get, end our dependency on, on foreign oil and, and coal-fired power plants and clean up the environment. My home, I'm fully solar as well. So I, I applaud your effort in this and I urge a yes vote from all my colleagues. So thank you.
Okay. Let's prepare to vote. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Okay. Mr. Weezer?
Forthwith, please.
All right. That brings us, Madam Clerk, to item 15.
Yes, call special for cards.
And it was called special for cards? Okay.
Yes.
John Walsh. Arnold Sacks. Matt Dowd. Mr. Walsh.
John Walsh, blogging at Hollywood Highlands, H-I-G-H-L-A-N-D-S.org, or go to Walsh Confidential, or go to Who's Making Out, Who's Making Out at Walsh Confidential. Bike safety, doing an excellent job on bike safety here. You know, a person who was very interested in bike saving was the late Jack Arion, dead, 91 years old, died peacefully at home, please of the supply sergeant. He created the, everyone remembers the big signs, billboards in Hollywood and HollywoodHighlands.org. And I'd like to finish by saying, right here, three water main breaks just today at, in your district, right now, traffic is closed, Croft Avenue in Romaine, 300 block of Vista and Fairfax Avenue. Eastbound lanes of Third Street have been shut down. Thank you very much, DWP. Yes, right. Reactive. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Okay, Mr. Walsh, let's have Matt Dowd. And Matt, after you, be arminet Norwegian.
All right. Yes, thank you, Hubbs. Good to see you back. Now, look, this is great, great, great. It's good, it's good, it's great, it's great, it's good, it's great. Getting 250,000 from the laws, the, the, the state. All right? So here's the thing I want to talk about. We're getting it from the California Office of Traffic Safety for Bike Safe LA. Okay? Now here's the problem of Venice Beach, somewhere you can put this money to get some police down there for the people on that bike path. police down there for the people on that bike path, because every single day, without fail, there's people jogging, there's people pushing strollers, people just having a lovely little wander, with, you know, but there's babies, they got little kids with them and everything. They need to be warned off of there, because there's a bunch of cyclists coming by, and you get to these little spots where, oh, all of a sudden, there's babies, and there's people walking, and there's people jogging, and there's people on bikes coming this way, and people on bikes coming that way. And there's problems. And it's important to me, because I've been cited by the police in retaliation one time for riding on the boardwalk at nine in the morning, when there's no one on there, no one around, but here, when, you know, when the peak times of Venice Beach, when it's crazy, and so, you know, I have to use the bike path or go in with all the traffic, and there's people all over it. And I'm tired of that, it's, you know, because they hound me over my compliance. I showed you, I got a citation for having a guitar case that extends over an imaginary line while I'm performing, and my umbrella's leaning down, and my mic stands over four feet high, and I'm performing it after sunset, and all these things, but people are wandering all over this bike path, creating a real public safety hazard.
Okay, Matt, but you know what, I don't always agree with you, but I do think the guitar case thing is kind of ridiculous. The poster, the standing poster you had of the actress, I think is ridiculous. So, anyway, Arminet, what, Arminet, you changed. Well, that, I'm just not getting that. Okay, Arminet.
Good morning, respects to the City Council members. Actually, I very much endorse with Resolution Number 15, where they include grant funding for Bike Safe LA program. According to this program, $250,000 will be received as a grant from California Office of Traffic Safety, and I hope that this actually motion will pass unanimously, most likely, in my opinion. And I believe that those $250,000 shouldn't be left in the pockets of bureaucrats. Instead, it should go to build new bicycle lanes, because those bicycle lanes are too few, and they need also cameras, security cameras, to monitor some bicycle lanes, you know, to prevent accidents in most dangerous areas, in most of increased public safety hazard areas, where you should install also security cameras, you know, to monitor bicyclists, you know, to provide safety for bicyclists, actually, which is not actually a matter or just, because the security of that bicycle lane is important, and also important to build more bicycle lanes, because very few exist, and most of those bicyclists, we don't have access to, to know, safe bicycling, or, and we have, for instance, in my area in Los Angeles, where there are almost no bicycle lanes, very few are, and I have not seen many or any at all, you know, and I have, people have to, you know, watch out for motorists, because there is no bicycle lane, you know, to safely, you know, separate bicyclists from, you know, motorists from traffic, you know, road traffic. Well, actually, yeah, so that building more bicycle lanes should be a proposal, we should actually accept such a motion to build more bicycle lanes in the city of Los Angeles.
Thank you, Mr. Norrigenian. Now we'll go to the Valley, where we'll have Donna Pierman, Marion Fogler, and Rick Nightingale. Rick, you'll be the closer.
Oh, okay.
Donna, you're up first.
Okay, yeah. I want to do is say that these bicycle things, bicycle lanes, I don't see why we couldn't have fit that into Proposition R. I don't see why we can't enclose, whether it's just one form of transportation system, the rail, I think this would be a good spot to do the bicycle lanes. And I don't, the only thing I don't like about the bicycle lanes is that a lot of planes, these cars, don't have enough really for the cars they have right now, and what about people, places like Havenhurst, I heard, that only has a few bicycles going on, and it's kind of silly to take one whole lane away to make a bicycle lane. For bicycle safety, we should, as I said, let's do Proposition R, because if that's a transportation system, then that would be good, Measure R money is where we should be going to per bicycles, because that is a form of transportation, and that way, we won't be taking money from the state. Yeah, so we can't take the money from this, yeah, it's not right to take money from the state, because the money is having a lot of problems in the first place, and, yeah, that's money is taken from the state is wrong, because we are having a lot of problems, and they're even going to make a lot of cutbacks where they're at. So, anyway, I'm going to let somebody else speak on it, I think this is the wrong thing to do, vote no.
Marion, Ms. Fogler. Rick, you're next.
Yeah, I think this is outrageous, how we're doing the bike lanes. We need to understand that where, you know, cars have to have a place to go on the street, at the same time, you know, you're taking an awful lot of room here, and, you know, I'm very courteous, and people need to learn that, to be courteous to people on bikes and pedestrians. And if we would just have a public, a PR to get people to be aware and knowing about pedestrian and bike safety, then, you know, it would be, it's not really practical to have so many bike lanes everywhere, because, you know, the traffic is such a high volume in our city. I'm kind of very disappointed, so it could be, it could be done better, and I think it needs further looking at. I think we need public hearings and have people have inputs about how we can make this better, because we need to accommodate all, including our cars, you know, especially if you're advocating people to having electric cars, like Garcetti. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Marion. Thank you very much. Mr. Nightingale.
Yeah, Rick Nightingale. They wouldn't let me speak on that DWP deal, but I'll tell you, CSUN over here put, I know, I'll get on the bike, I promise, all of the parking structure was all solar, and then guess what they did? They says, "You go online, we're going to charge you more money." Now, you tell me why DWP said that, and they couldn't go online.
Rick, switch back, switch back, Rick.
Huh?
No, I said, switch back to the item.
I appreciate that. Bike paths, I don't know why, but when I was younger, we always went in the opposite direction of the traffic. I don't know why they ever changed it. I think it's a lot safer. Going down White Oak, you turn around, and they took a whole lane. You used to have two lanes going back and forth, now you only have one. I've gone down that street numerous of times, and I, maybe they go in the evening, I don't know, during the day, I don't see any of them. The only ones that, and then you get these other bike people that turn around and is riding, and they're in a big group. They take the whole lane anyway. They're not in the bike lane. So I realized, there was a lot of people hit with bikes, and I realized that you do need it, but there is a lot of bike paths that are not being used, and I have no idea why it happened that way. Just getting back down by the beaches, yes, you can't have strollers, you can't have all this stuff, and why isn't the police department clamping down? I realize there are children, and anytime you mention child, it's like God has spoken, but you can't be on a bike path, because if you run into them, somebody is going to get hurt. So what's good for the goose is good for the gander, and so you have to turn around and keep it strictly for the bikes if it is a bike path. Oh, and by the way, I will be listing in every one of these propositions, because they wouldn't let me speak on one, so now I'll put a number in for everyone from now on, and it will be...
Thank you, Mr. Nightingale. Mr. Zumadog.
Yeah, Rick Nightingale finally figured it out. Congratulations, Rick. It's Zumadog, 2013 candidate for mayor. Very important issue for me on a personal level, and I like to say that I don't drive a car, and I bike. I like to say the situation of biking in LA is so unsafe that I do not bike, I walk, that's it, so forget it. You can't bike in this city, and that's somebody who is a bikist. It's so unsafe. And now, I'd like to say that, so first of all, don't pour too much money into this, because I'll tell you some things that are really bad for bike safety. Density, density, density. You look at Bill Rosenthal's district, he's jamming so many giant projects up there, and that causes more traffic, and then you have less room on the roads, and then you have the bikes that chop up the streets, and so then you got potholes all up and down La Bange and Caretta's district, that's bad for bike safety. And let me talk about the fact that it's $250,000. Now, I'd like to know that every time there's big grant money, then you got Wendy Gruehl, Helen Keller popping out there in the media, "Oh gee, out of the $250,000, we had a quarter of a mile built," or, you know, like, "Oh gee, we had a million dollars, we had two jobs." So let's make sure we have some oversight, because what the problem is, is that you contract out all the business to independent contractors, because then people like Tony Cardenas and Richard Alarcon can put their mafia meat hook contractors in it.
Stay on the item, Zumadog.
Okay, so to improve bike safety, don't contract out the work to the mafia Rico people that you're involved in. Also, I'd like to say that with pipes breaking and water spewing out all over the place on a simple DWP pipe check, that's bad, because imagine you're biking down the street. First, boom, you hit a pothole, boom, then, you know, the water pushes up and you're flying up in the air, then you fall down on a sidewalk crack in LA. It's not very safe. Get the hell out of the city. They did everything wrong, and now they're taking a quarter million dollars, and they're going to throw it up in the air.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Okay, let's prepare to vote on that. So let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Okay, that brings us to item 16, Madam Clerk.
Yes, item 16, call special for cards.
Is that the last item of the day?
Yes.
Okay. Then I have Sean Murphy, John Walsh.
Yeah, I'd like to give a shout, I'm Fortis I am, I want to wish my fans happy Good Friday and Happy Easter, and you too, Mr. President.
Thank you, Sean. So if I could get Zumadog after Mr. Walsh, Zumadog. Okay, Mr. Walsh.
John Walsh, blogging at Hollywood Highlands dot org. This is declaring April 12, Woody Guthrie Day in the city of Los Angeles. You know, Woody Guthrie was a, let the midnight special shade, it's Ever Love and Light on You, that's one of his major songs. And also, Woody was a leftist, and his son is Arlo Guthrie, and I'd like to finish by saying, he used to hold up his guitar, and on his guitar he had etched, "This weapon destroys fascists." Well, that's what I have on this iPad. "This weapon destroys fascists," metaphorically, on behalf of Woody Guthrie, HollywoodHighlands.org. Thank you.
Zumadog, and I don't see Matt Dowd.
Yes, and this item is about Woody Guthrie, a folk hero. Now, if you check the blogs and type Zumadog folk hero, you will see my name occur, because that's how I'm referred to by the great people like Ron Kay. And I am a musician performer, so what I like to do for Woody Guthrie Day, I'd like to sing my public comment in the form of a folk song, and it's to the tune of Pink Floyd "Comfortably Numb," and it's called "Permanently Dumb." Hello, 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 is there anybody out there? Vote no if you can hear me, or another unanimous vote. Vote it down, there's no money around for silly stupid games. The CAO says more pain. Relax, 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 we have some public comment first. Just the basic facts, but to you they really hurt.
Mr. Dog, I'm being real liberal, but I hope you can connect, let's at least slip in a Woody Guthrie name every five seconds.
Thank you for that, I'd like to say, happy Woody Guthrie Day. I think Bill Rosenthal knows him, so that means screw this, because it shows what happens in the long run. You end up to be shady.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Dog. Is Matthew gone?
Yeah.
Okay, so then, let's go to the Valley, where we will have Mr. Nightingale, Donna Pierman, and Mary Ann. Yes, Rick?
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, you're on.
Yeah, Rick Nightingale. Right at the very end, when I was talking to you, I tried to speak on item two, and I didn't have my card in very fast. So, let's go to Willie Guthrie, and I'll come back to that. It sounds like a good day, just as long as it's bringing somebody's name to light that was somewhat famous back then. That sounds great. Going back to my other, since you won't let me, if I put my card in late before everybody has talked...
Rick, Rick, you got to stay on this subject.
I know.
And I think if you want to come in and fill out a card on everyone, that's fine, but now we're talking about Woody Guthrie.
But I really don't want to do that, but I will have to.
I understand, but let's talk about Woody.
Okay, so Woody turned around, and so the city is going to honor him for the day, and it sounds great that the council brings up people and so forth, and have a good day. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick, Mr. Nightingale. Okay, Donna Pierman. Pierman.
Yes, since now I'm putting my name on every one of them, I put no, I think this sounds good, I think Woody Guthrie had a lot to say, and he was a good folk singer, and I'm going to put him for everyone, but yeah, I think it's a good one to do, Woody Guthrie, okay.
Thank you. Mary Ann Fogler.
Well, hooray, hip, hip, hooray for arts and entertainment. Woody Guthrie is an example, okay? And I tried to get my daughter to do the guitar herself and piano and whatever you have it, I think it's great, and all have it for music, because that's, this is a very important aspect that we have to have. Communism does not take it, you know, they're very limited on your music, they control it, and also, hate to say it, but in the Islamic countries, they don't accept music, and it's a very sad fact, except the new people...
Stay on Woody Guthrie.
I understand, he's a good example. What I'm saying is, that Woody is bringing out the people who are very strict about not having, accepting music and bringing it forward, and I'm very proud of the fact is that I came from a very musically oriented family, and I appreciate that, because he's a good example. Thank you, Woody Guthrie.
Thank you, Ms. Fogler. Okay, on that item, let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Madam Clerk, where does that bring us on today's agenda?
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Consider them posted and referred.
There are excuses on the desk, Mr. President. Councilmember Reyes requests leave by 11:30 a.m. on April 10 for city business. Councilmember Carden is requested to be excused on April 13 and April 27 for city business. Councilmember Weezer requests to leave at 11:45 on April 25 for city business. Councilmember Carets requests to be excused on April 25 for city business, and Councilmember Parks requests to be excused on April 27 for city business.
Is anybody going to be here? Am I going to be here all alone? Okay, without objection. So now, announcements, and before I call on Joe, I want to announce to the council that we will not have our council meeting Friday.
Good Friday.
Good Friday, and that's the reason. Mr. Buscaino.
Thank you, Mr. President. It gives me great honor and privilege to welcome for the first time the John Farrow City Council chambers, Karina Rabanzo, here, she's a senior at Hilltop High School in San Diego, she's fulfilling in a high school government class requirement, she's going to be shadowing Kevin Bing, my legislative aide, so welcome, Karina, her mother, and also Kevin's mom, Adrian, thanks for being here, and welcome.
Thank you, welcome. Any more announcements?
When we did something, they made us pick a paper.
If we could rise for adjourned motions, Mr. Buscaino.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I rise today to adjourn in memory of an American hero, Roberto Casares of Harbor City. Mr. Casares was a light armored vehicle crewman assigned to First Light Armored Reconnaissance Battalion, First Marine Division. The 24-year-old Marine was killed in Afghanistan while conducting combat operations in the Helmand Province on Friday, March 30. His military decorations were many, including the Navy and Marine Corps Achievement Medal, the Global War on Terrorism Service Medal, and the National Defense Service Medal. May he rest in peace, Corporal Roberto Casares. Funeral services are pending. All members, please.
All members, yeah, without a doubt. Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you. I'd like to adjourn in memory of Jack Arion, and thank you for bringing that to our attention.
I did last week.
Oh, you did, you did last week? Okay. Like to, thank you, Mr. Englander, I know Mr. Labanz and I would like to be added to him, he was a real American hero as well, somebody who was an Air Force vet and did an incredible job, very active, I know, and a lot of stuff locally, thanks for having done it.
More adjourned motions, members. Ms. Perry.
I would like to adjourn, oh, I'm sorry, okay. I would like to adjourn in memory of Pope Shanaouda III, longtime leader of the Coptic Orthodox Church. Pope Shanaouda, the 117th patriarch of Alexandria, was an outspoken advocate for Christians in the predominantly Muslim nation of Egypt. He denounced strongly the violence directed at Egyptian Christians by Islamic extremists... He denounced strongly the violence directed at Egyptian Christians by Islamic extremists during his forty-one years as pope, and most recently served to ease the tensions between Coptic Christians and Islamic groups following the ouster of Hosni Mubarak as president of Egypt. His life was one of goodwill and passion directed at all groups, and his leadership through great political turmoil is deserving of this recognition. And I would like to join in the numerous tributes from around the world today in remembering the life of Pope Shanaouda III, a strong believer in Christian-Muslim coexistence. He will be sincerely missed.
Mr. Parks.
Thank you. I'd like to ask that we adjourn in memory of Lucy Manana, formerly named Lucy, but now is named Sister Charlene of the Sisters of St. Joseph's of Crondelette. She was born in May of nineteen-nineteen to Marie Figueroa and Nicholas Manuna. She moved to Los Angeles and attended St. Mary's Academy for grade school, and spent one year at Roosevelt High School, then transferred to St. Mary's Academy for her final high school years. She entered along with her sister and friends, the Sisters of St. Joseph, after, in February thirty-nine, she entered and received her habit and was named Sister Charlene. On August nineteen-thirty-nine, she also completed her motivation in making the first vows. August nineteen-forty-one, she was commissioned to teach at St. Patrick's Grade School in South Los Angeles, where she ministered for the next seven years. Shortly before she made her final vows in nineteen-forty-four, she became a naturalized American citizen. During the next fifty years, Sister Charlene gave positive evidence of her unique capabilities of switching gears smoothly. She navigated comfortably between elementary and secondary school, between ABCs and business courses, between being a teacher and an administrator, while also being a superior of the local community. Her three stints as administrator honed her natural ability to communicate and organize. The supreme test for Sister Charlene's stamina and her adaptability came when she was appointed superior of St. Joseph's Children's Home in Idaho. Her first task was to recover that school from a major water breakage which destroyed much of the school. After completing her work in Idaho, she spent the next twenty-eight years in education in Los Angeles, moving to the Crondelette Center, where she joined the Silesian community. Weekly, she volunteered at Daniel Freeman Memorial Marina Hospital. Over the last few months, she became experienced, subtle changes in her health, and she declined and passed away on March twenty-fourth, two thousand and twelve. Her funeral mass will be heard today at seven PM at the Crondelette Center, and we'd ask Ms. Perry to join on this.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Any, Ms. Corretts?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to ask that we adjourn in memory of Joe Kimberling, who passed away last week from complications of cancer. He died young, having been born in nineteen-sixty-six, but in his way-too-short life, he had a huge impact on many people in Los Angeles, because beginning in the year two thousand, he was the art director for Los Angeles Magazine. And in that capacity, he took on countless challenges from headline writing to design, and helped transform that magazine into an award-winning publication of national prominence. He not only loved the world of LA, he communicated memorable and lasting images and concepts about Los Angeles and our neighborhood's people and trends, and was named Designer of the Year three times by the City and Regional Magazine Association, and had a number of accolades to his name. A resident of Los Feliz, he leaves behind his partner of ten years, Steve Rogers. And also, I'd like to--
I'll second.
Thank you. Thank you. And also, I know Mr. Labanz already had adjourned in memory of Chuck Hollis, but I just wanted to note that a memorial service is scheduled for Wednesday, April fourth, at ten AM at Hollywood Forever Cemetery on Santa Monica Boulevard for him.
Thank you, Mr. Corretts. Members, this meeting is adjourned.